Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning.
Hello. Good morning.
Almost made a jump when you said good morning.
Are we ready?
Yes.
I believe so.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. This is a special meeting, May 19, 2025. This meeting will be streamed live on the RBC YouTube channel. We will call this meeting to order at 8:05. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. The public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. To ensure there is adequate public comment time, please provide your name and address prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at 970-878-9575. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name and address for the record. Are there any comments, public comments in the room?
Commissioner O'Hara.
Sean Luce, the clerk and recorder and the deputy clerks, I don't know if they've arrived yet. They normally don't get in the office till 8:30. I'm not sure.
She said she will be here in just a moment.
Okay, she'll be here in just a moment. So if we can hold on for just a moment. I think you go ahead and continue until you get to the business items because there's nothing on for approval. So I'll just make a note that we did start at 8:02 for her records, and that way she can report it. Or 7:02, I'm sorry.
No, 8:02.
I see. We're not starting at 7:02. Don't get me. It was actually 8:04.
Okay.
Um, so there's no public comments in the room?
No.
And I don't see any online, any online. This is a tentative agenda which includes all information available as of May 15, 2025. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the RBC Historic Courthouse, 555 Main Street, Meker, Colorado, and at the Rangeley Town Hall, 209 East Main Street, Rangeley. Um, we probably shouldn't do any of the consent agendas till clerk and recorders.
She just walked in, so let's just wait a minute, okay?
Perfect.
A computer problem. Good morning. All right, that's recording.
The word was said. Okay, Jennifer.
Perfect.
Ready?
Uh, we will move on to line item two, consent items, or the consent agenda.
And there are Denny.
Oh, thank you. Line item three, business. Line item A, we will be discussing and direction to staff regarding the 2025 Meker Airport GA ramp.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
May.
Mine's tired. We didn't have no battery.
All right, Eric, you ready?
Yes, I'm just logging in now, so.
Okay.
He's getting ready. How much range you get, Jennifer?
Uh, we didn't get very much, and we got a little. What about you guys?
A little more than half an inch. One five eight.
Cool.
It came down a little bit. I mean, I mean, it came up to get in the middle of the night.
A little snow at our house. Well, just, just a little bit up there was a white line.
We had some wind up the line too. Not the bird in the corset.
Sound house.
Okay. So, um, this discussion is how we want to move forward with the 2025 Meker Airport GA ramp replacement project. We recently, a week ago, received the bids for the GA ramp. Currently, right now, we have engineering fees of $450,000 for the project. These have both been, both design and construction services have had third-party IFE, which is independent fee, except evaluations per the FAA requirements on engineering fees and evaluations, and both of them came back approved. The bids that we received are broken out into, we received three bids, and the low bidder is elevated excavating. And they have a total bid of $3,009,097.1. What you see here, Schedule One and Schedule Two is broken up between FAA eligible funding and FAA ineligible funding. Schedule Two is the FAA ineligible funding of $736,995.32. What is considered FAA ineligible funding is where you have privately owned hangars, and within 50 foot of the front of those hangars is considered exclusive use by the FAA, and therefore is ineligible. So if you were to look at the aerial of the ramp at the Meker Airport, there is a 50-foot swath that goes along the front, air, uh, front portion of that from the privately held the hangars, and that is non FAA eligible funded, so that would be on the county to replace. Uh, we looked at a couple scenarios. There was no feasible scenario where we could break out the ineligible funded portion of the project, and the FAA eligible and do a full complete project that would make sense. The driving, driving forces with doing this project is, of course, the condition of the asphalt of the GA ramp, along with some significant issues with elevation, grading, and drainage of the ramp that's led to that degradation of the asphalt. So at the end of the day, right now, with no contingency, the project is, uh, costs, solid costs are $3,459,297.1. For the 2025 budget, we had budgeted $3 million in this project for the 2025 budget. Of that $3 million, we had, um, expected a sum of nine, uh, $1.9 million, $62,550 as reimbursement. However, you can see that there's a $50,000 local match from us, and so that would be, that 962 would be less than. So the first decision that we have to make is whether or not we move forward with this project. Um, if we choose to move forward with the project, we would need to come up with, the county would be, need to come up with the $459,297.1 that is over our current 2025 budget. We'd have to determine where those funding buckets are and whether or not we were going to add to this project's total cost. With that being considered, we have some options for reimbursement. The way the funding works for FAA, CDOT Aeronautics, and us as local sponsor is we receive both entitlements and for the last three years, uh, last four years, bill funding. What we're able to do, because we're one of only three sponsors in the state of Colorado with two airports, is we're able to combine those entitlement and bill fundings, um, to fund our project. So we can choose, if we have a bigger project at this airport, we fund that project. If we have a project over here, we fund this. The last project that was FAA funded that we did was the wildlife fence project at the Rangeley Airport, which was about $638,000. We did that, full perimeter fencing, survey work, and, and that work, and I think we did that, if I'm not mistaken, in 2021, 2022 timeframe. Uh, since then, we have not done a significant airport project that was under the FAA funding. One of the options that we have, if we were to move forward with finding the funding for the $459,000, we would, we could choose to, uh, have the 2026 entitlement and bill funded used as an option to refund us, which is right now an estimated $545,000 that we would receive next year, and that would reimburse us. The potential impact of doing that, uh, I like, always like the good pros and cons list. Uh, the pro would be, would offset the cost, uh, that we would incur as a, as a local funded sponsor for this project. Um, and we would be able to move forward. The low bidder is elevated excavating. They're the contractor that had just, they just completed last week our waterline project. They did an excellent job. They're very eager to go in. They have opens in their schedule to get moving on this project. I think we have a advantageous bid within the $3 million bid for the work. That would be a pro. Cons would be that if we choose to reuse the bill and entitlements from next year, but by 45 to offset this cost that we have funded, would mean that we would need to adjust the five and 10-year plan for the two airports on their projects. Currently, we have slated, um, both airports to do crack fill and silt on our ramps and taxiways and runways. We also have a coating project slated for both project, both airports for the runways, taxiways. And we have our airport layout plans scheduled the next two years at both airports. Uh, those projects would all be shifted out. One of the impacts of this is next year's our last year for bill funding, so that would not just shift it out a year, but it could potentially shift those projects out two, two years due to the fact that we have a lot less funding from the FAA uh, for funding our projects. And so it takes a longer to build up those funds to do project. One of our next options, of course, is if we just go ahead and fund the project of the $3,459,297, knowing that we're going to get reimbursed the 1.9 million and change from the FAA to cover that cost, and we just absorb that cost, move forward on this project. The, uh, the pros of that is we're getting it done this year uh, with construction costs escalating each year and unpredictable with, uh, the current economy. Um, that might be our best bet in keeping this project as low as possible. Um, and then second would be, we would not see that, that waterfall impact with the, our five and 10-year plans at the airports for their capital improvement projects with the FAA and CDOT Aeronautics. The second option, of course, is that we push awarding this project to next year. If we choose to do that, of course, the contractor is not expected to hold that bid. Uh, we would then look at rebidding the project in the spring of 2026 um, and see where those bids come in. There is a couple options there too, with the fact that then we know exactly what we're getting for bill and entitlement funds. We would have more money saved up for the project through the FAA and CDOT Aeronautics funding, and we would not have to utilize as much county funding to provide the project. However, the same cons exist with option one. With the reimbursement, we would see a shift in our five to 10-year capital improvement planning for the airports, right? Because the GA ramp replacement here in Meker, um, was slated for 2025. We would see that in 2026, and then, of course, all projects slated after that would be, uh, pushed out. Now, at any time, the FAA does allow the county as a sponsor to decide whether or not they just will so fund a project. So if we decide, we look at it in 2026, and we say, hey, we still want to move forward with the ALP, or we want to move forward with the surface coating, we could look at it and, and cover that cost, and that's, that's our choice as a sponsor. However, that again kind of negates any cost savings and, uh, with the cost of potentially the GA ramp going up and everything that's going. As Commissioners today, we'd call this meeting fairly quickly just because, um, direction would be nice to be able to, uh, utilize next week's, um, or Commissioners meeting to award the contract and move forward. I know the contractor, the FAA and CDOT is, is wondering which, is waiting to see which direction we head on this project. However, we are able to meet as many times as we need, and we could also, if we need to, schedule a special meeting if there is additional questions by the Commissioners today on funding sources or implic, uh, implic, implications on moving this project out.
Is it in?
Yes, sir.
That was a big sigh.
End conclusion.
Do either of you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a comment, I guess.
Okay.
I would, I, I want to, uh, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of getting this done, but I want to see where our finances break out. I want to see where our money's at and what our options are. And to do that, we're going to need a couple of days with Lisa to figure that out.
I have a few questions. Um, so you earlier said that the last big project that you guys did, um, with FAA funding was, um, at the Rangeley Airport, uh, with the fencing. How did we pay for the, or remind me how we paid for the waterline? Did FAA, did any of the FAA funding go towards that?
No, ma'am. We, uh, we funded the waterline, because the waterline is non FAA eligible for funding, and so the county fully funded the one about, we budgeted $1 million. Uh, project came in at roughly $878,000 completion. That was, um, 100% of how many funded that project.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I have is, um, how long, um, so when they, when they submit a bid, any, you know, business, how long does that, how long do they have to uphold that bid that they provided to us? What are, what are the guidelines around that?
I believe it's 60 days.
From the date that they submit it to us?
Yeah. But I, I need to verify that. Sometimes it's 30 days, but, um, I believe it's a question of six.
Okay. Um, the other question that I have is, um, when we met on Friday, um, you had said that CDOT goes out and inspects the asphalt at least yearly, if I, if I'm correct on that. Is that, is that correct that they go out and go and inspect at least yearly?
CDOT Aeronautics does a, they have an asphalt, um, inspection program that goes out and they take samples and, and inspections of the runways, taxiways, and ramps. Um, essentially anything asphalt-wise that falls under FAA, CDOT, Aeronautics, uh, funding eligibility. And they then do those assessments, and those assessments are used on whether or not, uh, they determine if, uh, like, for example, if a runway needs to be a full rehab, or if it just needs to have crack, or, or recoding, sealing, or mill overlay. That's their program that they use for that. Um, I do believe it's annually. Um, I can confirm and, and I have additional information on that. On that program.
And the reason that I'm asking is that I actually went out and, um, went out to the airport Friday afternoon, uh, the Rangeley Airport, and from my understanding, what you were explaining to us is that 50 foot from the hangar, 50 feet out, is not covered under FAA. That is completely county-only dollars that we would be using towards this program, or this project, sorry. Is that correct?
Y- yeah, so in, in this particular project, Jennifer, um, the way, uh, so if it's a, if it's a hangar owned by us, because we're the sponsor, that does not apply. That is, it is eligible for, for FAA funding if we own, we own the hangar. If it is a privately owned hangar, um, the FAA has deemed that that 50 foot in that hangar is exclusive use. And the idea behind that, or the thought, that idea, the thought behind that is that that hangar owner needs that 50 foot to be able to remove their aircraft from that hangar, like. The last thing, um, that would work is that maybe I fly in my plane, and I park it right in front of somebody's hangar, and they can, I get their aircraft out of their hang. So the specifications from the FAA says you need 50 foot in front of that hangar to be able to get your aircraft in and out of your own hangar. We don't allow other people to use that. And so then it becomes exclusive, and therefore we're not covering it. It is on, it is up to the sponsor and that hangar owner to figure out how that apron is then replaced, maintained, um, snow removal, those type of things for, for that section. Um, snow removal, those type of things for for that section.
And like, and the reason that I'm bringing this up is because I. Um, one of the hangars, which is the hangar is privately owned, um. There was a huge pothole in front of it that that they're not even able to get out of their hangar anymore because of that huge pothole, so I'm. Little concerned that if C dot truly is going out and going and inspecting these yearly. That they have totally missed that because obviously that's. Been in that condition for a while now because. This, this hangar on owner doesn't, hasn't. Flown their vehicle or their uh plane for at least a year or two, so. I guess where I'm.
So uh.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jennifer, so uh the Rangeley Airport is slightly different than the Meeker Airport. Um. If you look at an aerial of the airport, there's a. There's a taxiway that runs to the east. And because that taxiway is solely provides access to those privately home. Hangars. That taxiway is non FAA eligible, and so therefore they. They do not do their asphalt inspection. Um. System on that, and so. That is entirely up to us as a sponsor or entirely up to the privately owned hangar. To repair and maintain that asphalt.
And and correct me if I'm wrong, that we haven't been collecting ground leases.
That is, that is correct. Uh, well, we. I would say that we have been inconsistent in the collection of our ground leases. For a long time, um. The county had written into. The obligation of the airport manager contracts that they were responsible for a collection of the. The ground leases. Um, I know that we have not collected any ground leases at the Rangeley Airport prior to the privately home owned hangars. And I know that we have collected some ground leases at the Meeker Airport for most of the hangars. Uh, there is a number of. Hangars that are privately owned through Coulter Aviation that falls under your F B O contract. It does not require ground lease payment.
It, you said the F B O doesn't require a ground lease payment on, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. That they're not requiring a a ground lease payment? In Meeker or Rangeley?
So they, so. In uh. In Meeker. We have a, we have two contracts. We have the airport manager's contract. And we have the F B O contract, which just stands for fixed based operators contract. In Rangeley, we only have. An M O U memorandum of understanding with the college. To act as the airport manager. In Meeker. Coulter Aviation holds both the airport manager contract. And the fixed based operators contract. Within the fixed based operators contract. The county has written in that in lieu of. The uh, the ground leases, that was, that was part of the benefits of the fixed based operator was that. Coulter Aviation would not need to pay ground annual ground lease payments for the hangars that is owned by Coulter Aviation.
Thank you. I guess where I'm at, and I don't know where the two of you are, but. I'm, I'm not ready to make a decision today. I think this is being rushed, in my opinion. Um, I think we need to do that tour that we've talked about in June before a decision is made. Uh, so I can tell you that I'm not in favor of moving forward in in any way, shape or form, especially when it's. Going into county only dollars and in the shape that. The Rangeley Airport is in, I'm a little concerned.
And if I may, Madam Chair. Um. I'm with Doug. I want to know where our current finances are, what. Exactly, I mean, I know we talked about it would come out of that two point one million.
That's one source.
As a possibility, so I guess I need to have a layout of possibilities. And where that money would come from. In. Again, thank you, Eric, for explaining, you know, we do have those options to delay it a year. My concern is delaying it a year. And I guess there's no guarantee, but my guess is will be more expensive. And so I hesitate to delay it anymore. I understand that. The. The discussions between the Rangeley and the Meeker. But at the same time, if we continue to worry about that, we may not get anything done, so. I think that we need to really look at that hard and say. Okay. We've got this possibility. This is where we go this time, and again, next time, then we would look back at the other one based on need and so forth, assuming that that's where the need is, obviously. It sounds like there's a big need down there, so don't get me wrong. So I guess, I just feel like I agree. I don't think we're ready to make a decision today. Um. But probably looking at the finance piece of it yet. And verifying, are we thirty days out? Are we sixty days out on those bids? If we do the sixty days out, does that put us past the tour? When do we tour?
No, not until June twenty first.
Well, this is May. It should be within the sixty days, wouldn't be within the thirty days, right?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. So we just need to verify that. And I get we've got a. Potential to move, yes, you know, somebody that would move now. And I don't want to hold them off a lot, but I think our next, our meeting is next week, right? The board meeting?
No.
It's a commission, right? Okay.
On Tuesday.
Right, tomorrow, not tomorrow, Tuesday, the following day, okay. So. I would just like for us to have our money and any, if you can get that to us before then, so we can spend a lot of time thinking on it. Before the board meeting. Um. And, you know, maybe we can make a decision next week, maybe we can't. I guess that's where I would need to stop at least.
Um. Madam Chair. Why uh do you think that waiting until this? Uh tour? What's your reasoning there? Because the tour is is uh. What's your reasoning?
I, I guess I would ask. The two of you, when was the last time you guys have? Toured the Rangeley Airport? That's, that's my reasoning. If if you guys saw. What I saw on Friday. Where I'm concerned. And 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 again, I, my next goal is to go over and look at the Meeker one, that that's what I need to do next, because. I I haven't toured that one. I bet you it's been years, and so I want to look at both. And and looking at that because that fifty foot is going to end up being county only dollars. And does that, that section have to be done when we haven't been collecting ground leases? And and recouping those costs. For the county, which is county only dollars. That's where my concern is, is I I get. Things need to be replaced, but at the same time, if we are not recouping those dollars. Then, and and it's, those are taxpayer dollars and. That's where I'm at with it.
Good, and and I understand that, but um. The way I'm thinking is is it's two separate things. We can. We can have our own tour. We can do this before that tour.
Yes.
And get this stuff answered, because this is a little different than than uh. What we're going to be looking at than than the rest of. We can do that a lot sooner. And what this, uh the the stuff that you're talking about. Is uh. Is I believe that that could be discussion after we get this project done. Because that's stuff that's going to have to happen and make decisions. Uh, going down the road. It it really, in my mind, doesn't affect this. Uh. Project, am am I right or wrong on that?
I guess help me understand. I mean, I agree, we need to look at where this funding is going to come from, because we, all three of us know this is. Portion of it is county only dollars. If we haven't touched, I guess this is another question for you, Eric. If we haven't touched those FAA dollars. Since twenty twenty one, when you guys did the wildlife fencing. Is that part of this three million dollars that we've saved up? From twenty twenty one to today, that's that's being used for that? Or? Has that three, is that three million part of? General fund?
So, um, the way the entitlement and bill funding works with the FAA is. Instead of you applying for. Like a single grant. Like a lot of grant funded projects are. Um, each year. You're allocated an entitlement fund. That's, that's always been how they did it, so. Um. In a perfect scenario. We would look and say, okay, uh, five years from this point. This is our, our project that we're going to do. And then what we would do is then each year we would. Bank those entitlements and not spend them on funding so that when you get to that. Time of doing that project. You've now saved. That entitlement fund up to the ninety percent. Typically, this year is slightly different, because it's. It's ninety five eligible. But you would typically save those entitlements up until you had that ninety percent done. And then. At that point, you say, okay, we're going to uh. Pull the trigger on this capital improvement project. And and we have our ninety percent FAA saved up through entitlements. And we're ready to go, and then what we would do is locally, we would have to put in five percent. And C dot Aeronautics would put in five percent, and you'd have a hundred percent funded project. These last few years have been slightly different because we have the bill funding. And so the bill funding. Is is doing the same thing, but we have additional funds, so now you you have each year. Meeker Airport and Rangeley Airport gets an entitlement and they get a bill funding bucket. And then what we've done is we've laid out the priority projects, and so. A number of years ago, we slated that it was, we're going to do this G A ramp project, and we started. Bucketing those money towards that. And so that we could then have. The ninety five percent FAA dollars. Bucketed up. So that when we were ready to go to this project. Um. What's happened, right, is that this project has. Gone higher than what we bucketed. And so then you have now a delta where we haven't. We haven't uh. Allocated those funds long enough to get caught up to what the project cost is, and some of that has to do with the. Amount of escalation construction they've seen in the five years. Um, then the point there is, once that project's done, and we turn around and we find, we we have the next. Projects that we've identified that need to be done at those airports, and we use these. This bill and entitlement to fund those projects. Next year is when. The bill funding sunsets, and we'll no longer have that bill funding, and so moving forward, we will only have entitlements back again to do that funding. Now. This is all tied to. What is the WIMS program, the C dot Aeronautics. Set up, so each state, of course, has their own program for managing fund, the federal funding, like. Federal funding's done all over this country. C dot has chosen to use WIM. And so within the WIM program. We have to submit annually our. Five, ten, twenty year plans for capital improvements at the, at the two airports. Within that WIMS program, we show. Let's say, for example, uh, we want to do. We want to do a new runway at the Rangeley Airport, not that we are, but this is an example. And and we show that that, that project's going to be five million dollars or ten million, doesn't really matter, we use ten million. Ten million dollars that project, and we say we're going to do it in twenty thirty, right? And so then what we'll show. In our WIMS projects, and because we're unique, we're only one of three sponsors in the state of Colorado, we're able to combine our entitlements from the two airports. We could show them marching forward the next ten years, getting to that. That project's cost. Now, what C uh C dot has said, we don't want you changing your projects, especially within three years, but five years preferably out. Because they're, they're managing all these big buckets of money between C dot. And the FAA, so they say, when you submit this. Maybe we say in twenty, you know, thirty five, we're going to do this runway. By the time we hit twenty thirty. We're, we're really locking in with them and saying we're committed to doing this. And then that's. In essence, how they, how the program works, so. Back. In the day. Before my time in this, in this current board's time, and probably many of the people who sit in this room. And I really do believe it was probably post. Uh, or it might have been prior to the runway project in the year that happened, two thousand twelve, thirteen. They said, the next thing at Meeker is a G A ramp project, that's, that's the next high priority, and there was. There's reasoning behind that. Um, and of course, when we provide this reasoning, it goes CFA and C dot Aeronautics, and so there's a whole bunch of people that are. Well invested in this. Uh. That 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 has to meet concession with, but they said, all right, we're going to do this, and so. Probably for the last twelve, thirteen years, that's been on our WIMS program, and we've been marching towards that with how we're allocating funds. Now, there's other smaller projects that we do in the meantime. Um, we have to refresh our airport layout plans, and so the airport layout plan, or also referred to as A L Ps. Are the grand master plan for the airport, so that's stating, it's a, it's a very thick set of documents, very thick set of plans. And what that has in there is not just. It has how the airports are used, if we ever expand, where we would expand, it has the sections of the airports, those designations. All the different nuances of of our airports, but it also has tied to. Our capital improvement planning, and so when we do that A L P. That's when we do those assessments and we grade the condition of the airports and where a priority needs to be. And one of the things that is critical when we do this. Is that understanding what the FAA is eligible and what FAA is ineligible. For example, FAA gets runways. Taxiways and rate, uh, sorry. Or ramps, G A ramps. Now. You brought up the ramp, the taxiway. That Rangeley has, which is a unique configuration of the airport where that taxiway only serves privately held. Um. Hangars, so that, that site, that's, it's a taxiway, but it's ineligible because of what it serves, not because it being a taxiway or not being a taxiway. And so as you go through, they evaluate that, but then there's other sides of the airport evaluations. Uh, that is needed for. Proper maintenance, operation, and good stewardship of the airports, and and we've done this um a number of times, for example. Uh, we did a new waterline project at the Rangeley Airport. That was a joint uh venture between the town of Rangeley and Meeker uh and Rio洛克 County. And we went and we put in a whole new water main in. Uh, we extended that water main out so that we would meet the general fire uh. Fire code compliance of having hydrants within four hundred feet of. Structures out at our airports, and we did that, and we were able to do that pretty efficiently, given the fact that the town of Rangeley. Uh, essentially did that work at pro bono for us of the county. We provided the cost for the materials. They installed the work and they did an excellent job. Uh, the year after that, we did a a new roof on the terminal and a new roof on our hangar. That was all county dollars because those don't fall under FAA eligible dollars, so those are all outside projects, and that's. That's essentially how. The waterline and fuel farm projects at Meeker Airport has been, capital two is looking at these. Capital improvements that are outside of the WIM, outside of the A L P, and those other priorities that we're saying for for projects. So I, I hope that answered, um, it's very. There's a lot of nuance to it and understanding on on the difference, and and I'm, I'm still learning and discovering as I go on how they. How they attribute these or how they want us to manage these airports.
Thank you, Eric, that that did answer my question, and and I, I'm, I'm looking forward to. You know, these tours so that you can help not only us understand, but the community understand that. All these different pockets of funding and and how it's done and and why we do what projects we're doing when we're doing them. Um, it it helps me as well, so I I do appreciate that. Um. Really quick, though. really quick though, so you said that, and, and so I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, that you guys have to tell CDOT which projects you're doing. Like you have a, you know, you're saying, okay, we, we need to get the GA ramp done at the Meeker Airport within, we should be doing it within this timeframe, three, five years, you said. So that's the next project that you guys told CDOT that you would be doing when you were done with the wildlife fencing, correct?
I, uh, and I, I apologize. I don't wanna overcorrect you, um, Commissioner. Um, so, um, that, yes, in a sense, that was correct. We had slated, but I think it had been on the books much longer than that. We had slated, um, I think what occurred with the wildlife fence project was, and this happens too, is like, it's all great to have this really beautiful plan. But we all know how, how planning goes, correct? So I think what it, what it occurred was, um, one of the things that kinda gets mixed up with the wildlife is there was actually a whole nother project with, before the wildlife fence project. So, and I, I apologize. Like I, I jumped into the airport, my position with the airports kind of only in the last three to four years. So I'm still drinking from the fire flows. So with the wildlife, so we, we had planned a number of years ago, looking at the two projects, cause the FAA and CDOT typically look at airports individually. We just happen, because we have two to look at them, kind of they get mushed up together. But we do submit plans for both of them. So long time ago, we get done with, in Meeker, we get done with the runway expansion and taxiways. And we said, okay, the next thing to do in, in Meeker is the GA ramp. And we think we're gonna do that twenty twenty-five. And I think that was done in two thousand twelve, thirteen timeframe was that. They're like, we're done with this. What's the next place we move to in the Meeker Airport? In Rangeley, we had another issue going on. We had an issue with the connecting, um, the connecting, uh, taxiways with the, the ramp. We had some drainage issues. Uh, there was also some signage issues. There was a, uh, some grading at the airport and water drainage issues. And so they had slated that as the next project. And I believe, I'm trying to keep my memory correct. So give me a one to two-year buffer zone on the front and back end on this from, from full memory recollection. But I do believe that in twenty-one till end, twenty-two to twenty-three, we were doing that grading uh, connector, uh, we were doing covert replacements. We did a bunch of signage and striping out there. Well, I think at the tail end of that, we had some money left over on that project. Plus, we also had some entitlements and bill funding that we had gathered from uh, the Meeker Airport that was, that was in their, in their buckets too. And so then airport engineer at the time was GDA. They said, all right, guys. And the FAA is like, hey, you got a little bit of extra money left. What do you wanna do? And so then at that point, my predecessors working with G, GDA, our engineer said, let's get the wildlife fence project done. We got a lot of issues with wildlife getting in and on the airport grounds. Therefore, the fencing has holes in it. We got some other stuff. But they didn't quite have enough to do that wildlife fence project. So then what we did was we pulled some of the entitlement and build funds from Meeker. And we then said, all right, we're gonna also get this wildlife fence project done. So it was kind of a a, a move. Now that wildlife fence project was on our WIMS, was in our, our five-year, ten-year plan at Me, at Rangeley Airport, along with our drainage, along with that signage and a lot of the other things that was going on at that time at the airport. So the FAA says, well, you guys can do that. We'll allow that to happen. And so we were able to stagger, uh, combine those two projects. And, and I've been mistakenly just calling it the wildlife fence project, but there was actually replacements doing with taxiways and drainage. We did a bunch of grading back behind our hangar that allowed us to solve some water issues for the classrooms that are being held in that. And so we, we got those knocked out. And then we said, okay, now we have this GA ramp that we wanna do in twenty twenty-five. Now all dollars from that goes towards trying to build that bucket up to get that project done. And, and I think that's how that, that happened. Now I jumped right into the midst of the wildlife being almost done, the fence project almost being done and, and us starting to work towards this ramp project. And that, that's kinda why I have some of these knowledge gaps that you're, you're asking that. Um, I wish I, I had a lot better, more detailed information I could provide to you in today's meeting. I need to follow up with that too after this meeting.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate that. Um, so it sounds like we need more clarification on that, the funding part? And where that funding's going to come from? Am I correct, Commissioners?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We just need, we need to look at, or again, kinda like what Eric laid out there. Here are your options here. And as you all know, I need to look at them side by side. Here are, are, are our other options financially so that we can figure out where we go with that piece. And Eric, just backing up a little bit, I, I appreciated that, that history lesson there a little bit, cause of course I know nothing about it. Um, I mean, I don't wanna go back forever. But maybe ten years, the projects that have been done. I mean, you, I, I assume you've got those. At least you've got them in your head. I don't know if they're down anywhere.
So first of all, I, I want some clarification. Um, my role as a, exists now is, is ma, been modified. So I, I've been, so I very distinctly remember my first day at the county was July eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. So that was my first day at the county. Okay? Um, first day at the county, um, I met with our Commissioners and they had been presented with a major issue and that was that there had been a flooded issue at the Meeker Airport and that they needed help with, um, uh, fixing that issue. And so I got in the truck with Camp Orchard, our county attorney at the time, and we drove up to Jocelyn to the airport. And at that point, we were in the, right in the middle of the Meeker Airport's runway taxiway expansion and, and large aircraft expansion, which is in the largest, from what I know, the largest airport project, single airport project that we had ever done at the county. And it was one of the largest CDOT funded projects. And I believe a lot of that money came from CDOT Aeronautics through a, through a grant for them to do that project. What had occurred was, uh, the contractor had cleared and rubbed a lot of the vegetation out there to start doing the mass grading. We had gotten our, uh, normal monsoon, June rainstorms come through and, and we didn't have a proper outfall and retention pond in place. And and what had happened was, uh, there were two residents that had gotten silted up real bad and it seems, yeah. And so we had, uh, we had corrected those and, and, uh, and did our very best. And those people really wanted to, they, they had a lot of, um, room for us on what, what we did there. We made it correct to my, my viewpoint. From that point on, um, we finished up, the county finished up. I was not part of it. At that time, it was uh, under other people's responsibilities, finish up the airport and, and I had nothing to do with the rooms there.
And I, yeah.
So, so moving forward, um, the projects I have been involved in, and I, and like I said, give me a year or two from memory.
And, and Eric, I'm sorry, not to, not to cut you short, but I'm just thinking if I, if I'm that, like you, I'm that visual person. So if you can give us those in a document of some kind?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So I don't want you to have to, cause you pretty much covered all those. So I don't want you to have to redo it. Cause you do a really nice job of that. It's just if I could see it in my, it would be awesome. Okay. Thank you so much. I like how you and I track well with this is how it is. So, thank you.
Okay, so
What else?
Do we, so do we want to have it on the agenda for another discussion once we have those financials or, I mean, we could go one of two ways if we why don't we make sure that we put on the agenda that we at least are gonna discuss it? And/or have a decision made on if we're gonna move forward with the project. But I think at least having something on the agenda for Tuesday would, uh, help us to know how, I guess, how soon can we get those financials? Do we know?
Um, I'll need to check with Lisa and see what her schedule is. Um, but I think with Eric and I could, should be able to communicate with her. I'm gonna be out, uh, starting tomorrow. However, Eric's the, uh, the digits. So I will coordinate with the two of them. And like I said, I don't know what Lisa's schedule is like, but I would think by next Tuesday, she should be able to come up with some pots of money that says you could do this, you can do that. And some of the LATCF funding we were looking at for bridges. You know, you allocated to find the bridges elsewhere. I mean, it, there's, you know, you've also got CCITF, which we have reserved for capital projects. How much of that? So there are different pots of funds and reserves that can possibly be used for this, but I think that she probably, similar to the, the presentation she did for you during budget season, would be the same thing that she would do and just tweak that to show what you allocated and where those funds could come from.
Right. If possible, I would like to have that in a report waiting for the meeting.
Yeah.
Soon as she can get it just on, on paper.
And, and I don't know what her availability is. I apologize. Cause I know she's, you know, we just did our audit here. I don't know how much more they're working on for Paul or her other uh, county that she does this for.
And I, I concur, Jennifer. I think we definitely want it on the agenda. Um, and the next meeting is in Rangeley, correct? And I'm gonna be gone starting Wednesday, two of this week. So I might not get down there until right before the Commissioner meeting or whatever. But I would like to go take a look at the Rangeley Airport um, and so forth. Just so that I am aware and familiar with what the scenarios are there. Um, but yeah, I think if we get all that information together and really take a hard look at it, I'm hoping we could make a decision next week. But if not, we can do another special meeting and, and get down to the nitty gritty and make some decisions for you.
I like that. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Yes, thank you. Nice job, Eric. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to business, uh, line item B.
Madam Chair, I would move, um, approving a letter of support for amending the BLM State of Colorado MOU regarding oil and gas permitting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, Reese, do you wanna give us a really quick overview for this?
Yeah, and I, I sent you all the update, um, from QB last week. It's, I'll, I'll just keep it uh, short and sweet. It sounds like, um, this will at least maybe foster some more conversations in meetings between QB and the BLM, but it's also looking like maybe, um, engaging ECMC on more in-depth conversations regarding um, specific plans for QB's development in the state. So you know, I kinda see that as, uh, you know, the, 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 not really an issue, I guess, because ultimately QB's plans to drill and operate were going to be seen by both agencies either way, right? But, um, you know, I, I think the BLM definitely is still exhibiting their concern to follow state regulations and, and maybe not fully on board with, um, the drafted MOUs language that would decrease duplicative measures for both agencies, but it also sounds like maybe the BLM is open to having some of those conversations to increase efficiency as long as ECMC is on the same page. So I think, um, I think the letter's in good shape to submit, um, for QB's use in further negotiations and draftings. I would imagine we will see more drafts of this in the coming months. But that also being said, if we get a BLM director at the federal level, who knows what will change. So, um, let's, uh, move forward hopefully with approving this letter, but also knowing that a lot could change in a very short amount of time, at least hopefully in a short amount of time.
Thank you. I actually had the opportunity on Friday to meet with John Raby, uh, Doug Bilsek, and I don't remember the other gentleman's ma, name. Um, who is, um, I believe the Director of Minerals for, at the federal level. And, um, very, very good conversation as far as the MOU is concerned. Um, you know, we talked about about QB's, um, and, and matter of fact, Doug brought it up that he had met with them, I believe the Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday of last week. And, um, the possibility of some of those changes, um, we, you know, the unfortunate piece of all of this is that federal permitting can't even happen until the state does their permitting. And that's the unfortunate piece of all of this that, that I uncovered. Um, as I, as I've been doing my own researching on figuring out this MOU. So ECMC unfortunately has that poll and that was the conversation that I was, that I had with Doug, I guess more so. And Doug said he was, uh, he was going to visit with ECMC about the length that they're taking on getting some of this permitting done. So hopefully, you know, I, and, and I'll keep pushing it, keep having that conversation as much as I need to, to make sure that ECMC understands that, that they are really the ones that are, that are holding us up and, and getting some of this stuff done. So, um, I think Reese, you and I probably need to meet and go over that conversation that I had with, with the three gentlemen. And, um, but I, this letter is very important in, in supporting QB and getting some of that permitting done quicker than it is right now. So.
I, I would be really happy to do that. I think, you know, last week, BLM is, well, first of all, was that Adam Seuss? The other gentleman?
No, it was Michael Dennison, I believe. Michael Dennison, I believe. I could be wrong. It was Michael, but I don't remember the last name.
Okay. Well, I, I would be very open to ha, uh, having that conversation, cause I think just the changes happening at the federal level with just Lee's proposals in, in general, there's a lot to so to understand on how that impacts NEPA and, and, you know, all the way down to permitting individual projects. So, um, I will definitely take a look at your calendar and would really like to have that conversation.
I, I think we need to be looking more so at the Department of Interior. So Kelly, while you're in, in, uh, DC, if you by chance get to talk to anybody from the Department of Interior, having that call, conversation is what is their policy around? Um, I think it's backwards right now where the state is trumping our federal minerals. And that's where my frustration is right now. And so if you happen to have, you know, meet with somebody, please have that conversation with them and, and can they change some of those policies? Look at some of those policies and being able to get our drilling done sooner than later.
Thanks. I absolutely will. And I guess that's why I missed it. Can you somehow, I need more detail on what your conversation it was because I I don't understand how the state does trump the feds when it's all fed land, fed, um, minerals. I'm struggling with that. So if you can share any of that information so that I have my ducks in a row and I am speaking to those in DC, I absolutely will.
Okay. I appreciate that. And, and I'm still wrapping my head around it just as much as probably you will be. So that's, um,
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Do you, do you think that's because of this MOU or is there something else? Is there anything in statute or is this just what they're doing?
That's, that's what I'm trying to uncover is it, what, how does policy read at the federal level with the Department of Interior for oil and gas? Because right now, state statute for oil and gas? Because right now state statute says that they have to get the state permit before the federal permitting can start. Is, that's my understanding. And so how do we, how do we work towards getting that changed? Is, does it take that federal policy? I don't know. That's, that's my question right now is, is how does that read? Does it read anyway like that where the state is really that authority before the federal government? And that was, I, I mentioned that in my meeting with them, that that was my concern.
So I guess what I would ask of them is show me where it's in state statute, that the state has that authority.
Authority.
Not just taking word for it. Where, show me.
I would, I would really encourage them to take control of it. And being as how we're from Rio Blanco County in the state of Colorado, and we're asking this, the federal to take it over, I think that would say.
And, and I, yeah, I, right now I agree with you. I think we have to be very careful when, because we typically like to have, I mean, the, the lower level government in more control. So I want to be really careful and not be requesting that the feds trump the state. And then in five to 10 years, it's flipped. Not that I really think it will be in this state, but it's flipped. And then it's, oh my gosh, now we wish the state was in control. I want to know what is in statute in the state. And Reese, you may be able to help us with this, being Mr. Research. Um, what's that statute that gives them that authority? That the feds believe they can't take it. I, I just need to understand it. Cause right now I absolutely do want the feds to have the control. Don't kid, don't get me wrong. But how do we get, what, what does it really say? I guess that's all I'm asking is what does it really say? And then we can ask and say, this is how we want to change it. Does that make sense?
Yes. And I think that there's a possibility that it's the federal administration and the state administration that are just, uh, have come up with this.
Uh, that's what I'm thinking too. It's just what they're doing. It's not in policy. And that's where we need to nail them. I, I just remember going back to any time that the, the government, I don't care whether it's local, state or federal, show me where it's in writing. Sometimes that changes the conversation.
Thank you. No, I, and I completely agree with you. And that's, that's exactly was my point when I had that meeting was.
And thanks for getting that. Thanks for getting the meeting together and doing it.
Yeah, absolutely. We just, we need to keep pushing it. And I, and I told all three of them that I, that Rio Blanco is going to continue to push this, especially the MOU. We completely agree with, um, you know, we're supporting QB in this MOU and getting some of those, um, authorities switched over. And, and that table was one of the points that, that I made sure to make that helped me understand why ECMC is, is overriding on the federal level and the, the way that the MOU reads right now. So, um, I think we just need to keep pushing it. And like I said, you know, and I would, I would really appreciate, you're going to be over there and in person, Kelly, if, if you have that opportunity. I, I know I, I will. I'm at WIR this week for Public Lands. And, um, I know John Raby is going to be there in person. Um, I'm hoping this, this, uh, Michael gentleman will be there as well so that I can sit down and have a conversation with him as well. So we just keep hitting them, hitting them on all sides and that's all we can do right now.
So I'm sorry, I'm curious. It doesn't happen to be Michael Ned, does it?
Let me pull up my email.
You can send it to me or something later. And the reason I ask that is Michael Ned has been there a long time. He's been through multiple, uh, and he's, he's at Natural Resources. Um, his wife was the federal and local liaison with the Department of Interior. So they've got a lot of history there.
Well, and he, he actually, the only question he asked me, yes, it is Michael Ned. Um, he,
Still there. Wow.
He asked me one question. He only spoke one time and that was to ask me, he said, so you're telling me that the state has to permit before the federal government does. And I said, yes, that is my understanding. So I'm hoping he's doing his research based off of that question that he asked me.
Perfect. If you got a phone number, I don't know if I still have his current phone number, but I'm happy to visit with him too. Perfect.
Yeah, I don't have his number. I only have his email, but I will get his phone number and we'll make sure we have a conversation. So yes, I will get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on this? Sean, will you please call the roll?
Ridgefield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye. Moving on to business line item C.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the letter to send to Anshute's exploration regarding the County Road 77 Bridge Replacement Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Um, other than, uh, for everybody.
Um, I was just going to say, uh, in my, I made an error. I sent that to the Commissioners. Matt had not had a chance to see it and neither had Tina at that. I think there, uh, I've asked them to take a look at it to see if they had any concerns. Um, so with that being in mind, they just saw that this morning. I'm hoping that they'll be fine with that. I did, uh, submit some drafts to the Commissioners and did not receive any changes. Um, I don't know if I need to send the draft to the people that, um, Jennifer had listed rather than send the file.
Jennifer needs the draft. And if there's no comment or anything back there, then they, those other people are the people that need the file.
Okay. Jennifer did receive that on Friday. So, and I have not seen an email back from her, but I will check to make sure that I have not got one.
Yeah, that was the list of people in QB in order that needed to have that letter.
Okay. The approved letter. Okay. Perfect. So, um, Jennifer did have that on Friday. Again, that was fairly late on Friday that that was sent. So I will confirm that, um, I will give her a call this morning.
And just to clarify, Jennifer with Anshute's, not me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know. I was having that same thing.
You're right. And we did the same thing with the Doug's, the Jennifer's. Um, yes, Jennifer Land from Anshute. I'm sorry.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Sean, will you please call the roll?
O'Hair?
Aye.
Ridgefield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
All right. So it looks like we are at the end of our agenda. No other business. So we will be adjourning at nine 16.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thanks. You too.